I call the regular meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners from when we recessed from August 14th back to order. Please note that this is a continuation of the regular meeting from last Monday evening. A portion of the agenda from this meeting was conducted and completed at that time, including a public hearing and informal comments. The last matter addressed in open session was the approval of the consent agenda. We will now pick back up where we left off with the business portion of the agenda.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I would like to make a motion that we add an item to the business section of tonight's agenda. That motion is an item regarding county participation and outside events.
Okay. Thank you. We'll put that at the end of the business, okay?
You may need a board vote on that one.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to add this item, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll put that at the very end.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item 23-562, Land Use Board Compensation. A public hearing was conducted concerning this item on August 14th. I will now recognize Lee Jensen, Planning Director for Comments from County Staff on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill, Vice Chair, Board. I will be brief. So, as you'll remember, on July 1st, the Land Use Board was created. They serve as both the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment for Union County. Both the previous Planning Board and Board of Adjustment members received compensation and travel reimbursement for attendance at those meetings. And our recommendation is to pay the Land Use Board as well. So if you choose to approve Board of Compensation, like we need three things, and these are the three things we need: to adopt the ordinance concerning compensation for the Land Use Board, to set the compensation amount at $50 per meeting and travel reimbursement, and to pay the Land Use Board members really with a start date of July 1st, which I know has already passed. Boards already met two times, and we would like to go ahead and pay them for that service that they've already done. Public hearing, as you said, was conducted last meeting. I don't believe anybody spoke. I'll be happy to take any questions.
You want to make the motion?
Yeah. So I'll make the motion that we approve an ordinance for the amount of $50 per meeting, including travel reimbursement, with the start date of July 1st, for Land Use Board Compensation.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Can we have some discussion?
Oh, sure, if you want to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. While I was against the formation of this entity, the Land Use Board, I feel like the county, and do feel like the county, is better served by having both a Planning Board and a Board of Adjustment. I will be supporting this motion, I think, as long as we have a Land Use Board. There should be pretty typical compensation for it, just like there was for the prior boards. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I agree with Commissioner Williams.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to 23-492, The Short Water Line Extension Program, Applicant Selection Recommendation.
Good evening. My name's Alina Young. I'm a project manager in the Capital Improvements Group, primarily over the short water line program. And we're going to be talking tonight about the FY23 program and offering our recommendations for selected projects. This is just an overview of what we're going to be talking about, starting with the program background. The program last year ran from September 21st through December 20th. It had a budget of $5 million, along with $100,000 to reimburse people for their well testing, which was part of ARPA funding. And in order to qualify, to apply for the program, you had to either, you had to be an existing resident, or you had to have a vacant lot with an active building permit, or for any non-residential property, you had to be maximum of one inch service line. The goals and objectives of the program primarily is to address public health concerns, which is why we required well testing this year for the program, and reimburse those costs for the qualified applicants. And also, we want to ensure fiscal responsibility to the county, which is why we look at participation rates, costs, and system benefit. This is a breakdown of the scoring. These are maximum scores for each category. 60% of the possible score is based on water quality and quantity in the well, and then the remainder of the 40% is based on the cost per customer, their participation rate, and then the benefit to the system. And this is a lot of numbers, but this is just a breakdown of when we type in things into our scoring sheet, how the points kind of spit out, and how those are all broken This is talking about the required fees if someone is selected as an applicant. First, they have to pay the meter fee. If their home is built after June 2018, they have to pay the current system development fee, which currently right now is $1,678, and then there is a cost share fee associated with it. And that is calculated based on each project's participation rate and the potential customer density for that project. And so there's, the range for that is 750 to 3,000 that they'll pay. This just kind of shows you a minimum cost and a maximum cost. The left-hand side of both of those charts are without the system development fee, and on the right-hand side, it's with the system development fee. So you're looking at a range of minimum cost, $1,100. Potential maximum cost is about $5,000. So I'm going to pause there. Is there any questions about the program overview? Okay. So this is an overview of the FY23 application period. As I mentioned, it ran last fall. We did outreach effort to the residents through social media, and also, we sent about 2,300 brochures out to residents. They could apply either online, or they could send in a paper application. We did encourage people to apply as a group. And as I mentioned, we required well testing this year, so they had to have their well testing results at the time that they applied. They had to have, so it wasn't like they applied for well testing, they had to have the actual results in hand with their application. We had 65 applicants this year, and a total of 34 projects. This is just a little example of how we come up with a score. When we get an application in or a group project, we create a map of that project, and then use that data along with their water quality data, and we input it into the little spreadsheet that you see there on the left, and then that comes up with their score and their cost share fee. So this is an overview of the application period. As I said, we had 65 applicants and 34 projects. It was a total of 33.7 miles of potential projects, and the estimated cost for all of those would be $16.9 million. This is a lot of stuff, but this is basically just all the project's data. You can see the score there, right next to the application number. So we had the highest score of 83 and a low score of 15. And this is a map just showing you, the red is the, all the projects that we had. So you can see we had a pretty good dispersment of applications throughout the county. So now I'm going to get into our recommendations for projects.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So I believe that one of the slides that you showed had a comparison between FY22 at 350 applicants versus 65 in FY23.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that we can attribute that drop-off on applicants to?
I believe the major factor in that was the requirement of the well testing. I think some people, maybe they had, they didn't get their results in in time to apply that wanted to apply, and then I think just the extra step of having to get the well testing done, probably a lot of people didn't, you know, decided not to apply for those reasons, either, you know, time or that kind of thing. The previous year, it was just, you could submit them if you wanted to, but you didn't have to. So you could just really fill out the application and hit submit. So I think that extra step is what really was the difference between the number of people who applied.
Thank you.
All right. So I am going to talk for a minute. Along with the other scoring factors that I discussed, we also look at something called water age, which is basically how long it's going to take to get to that, the water to get to that house. And if the water age is too old, it can create water quality issues. So the maximum water age target for AWWA is 14 days. So what we did is, anything over 14 days, we had to eliminate that project from the ranking. So this is that same table from earlier, but this shows you all the ones we had to eliminate for, for water age issues. And so essentially, what we ended up doing, because of the number of people we had apply and the water age issues, we're recommending, every project we're recommending is everyone that applied that didn't have a water age issue, essentially. So we have 17 total projects, 45 applicants, 6.5 miles of pipe, and the cost is $3.3 And this is just the stats for all of those projects. And also on the right there, you can see the estimated cost, cost share for each of those projects. Yes.
Question here.
Yes, sir.
How do you calculate your water age? Because we had plenty discussions on this in the past, and if you connected and closed a loop, of course, that fixes it. But if you've got someone at the end of, end of the run that's using water, is your water going to age that much?
So we looked at how far it was from the connection to the home, and then we used the average water use data for that household, and then we came up with a number that way. So we didn't really do a lot of calculations on if we closed the loop or not. Some of it, it was just way too far, and some of them, it was also, there was only one applicant. If they had maybe had a couple more households, it would have changed the water age. But some of them, it was just like one applicant, kind of way far away from the nearest connection. And so, and we also, you know, we didn't even look at how far away it was from like the nearest tank. We just used the nearest connection, so it was kind of a generous estimation in the first place. Does that, does that answer your question?
Well, I guess you have a calculation on how much water a home's going to use and how long, if they've got a one-inch pipe going down to their home, how many cubic feet of water is going to be in there, right?
Yes, we used the average household data from Union County Water, and then we used a six-inch pipe as the pipe.
What inch, I'm sorry?
Six inch.
Okay.
So I agree with this line of questioning. Were you able to filter out the homes that were eliminated? And were those homes some of the highest scores that needed water the most? And are there any future recommendations for those homes? Or, you know, did you identify the ones that were eliminated to see how bad the score was, or how good the score was before they were eliminated?
We really just had to do a flat elimination based on the number of days, that, you know, whether they had a high score or not. It's just, you know, it's, we can't impact the system negatively that way. So really, even if they had a high score, unfortunately, if they had a certain water age, then we had to eliminate them.
Okay, thank you.
One other question, too.
Yes, sir.
Because I've been involved with this for many years.
Yes, sir.
And I was out in the hospital for a number of months this year. When did this board direct you to use that water aging method?
We used it last year as well. It was just a decision that we made.
Yes, ma'am. So yes, the water age issue was discussed last year, and the issue really relates to this. It's of no benefit for us to provide poor water quality from a public system when they have poor water quality in a well. And the issue is that, you know, there are standards set by the AWWA, and we're following their standards, but still being conservative in how we calculate that number. As you'll see, the number of these are significant in their water age. They're not close, they're not 15 days, they're 200 days, 38 days. So we felt that it was important that we notify the board and make the recommendation that we not recommend projects that exceed that timeframe. But we did use that last year. Understand, we were fortunate, there weren't a whole lot last year that created that problem. But this year, there are a lot more projects where you may have one person, which doesn't turn the water over significantly, and therefore creates even more significant water age issue. And John may have more information than I do, but that's, that's the crux of the matter.
And I'll also add, you know, last year, we had a ton more people apply. So when we were eliminating, we did have a percentage that had the same issue, but we also had a lot more projects to, that we were looking at.
So Brian, if I understand correctly, then, the basis of the 14-day water age is based off of industry standard.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So it's not an arbitrary number that staff has come up with, but this is an actual industry standard, consensus standard used in water, in municipal waterworks.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So just a couple of quick points to clarify here. So yes, the 14 days is an AWWA standard, so it's industry-wide. I want to make sure that it's clear that we apply that 14 days, starting from that point of connection. So the 14 days for AWWA is from when that drop of water leaves the water treatment plant. So we're giving people a pretty good grace period already, because water's got to travel through the system to get to that point of connection, but we're counting the 14 days from that point of connection. So it's generous in its application to begin with. The second thing I'd point out is, I believe you asked about the range of scores. If they had a high score or a low score, were they eliminated? In this table, you can see that we really have a range. So we have projects that scored well that had to be eliminated, and we had projects that scored very poorly that had to be eliminated. It just really depends on how that connection and the length of the project plays out. So I just want to make sure folks understood that.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh. So the metric is, Alina mentioned that we used certain metrics for this, and one of them is the, the average household usage. That's that 183 gallons per day for an average residence. The other metric that we use to calculate that volume is a six-inch diameter pipe. And the reason we use a six-inch diameter pipe is because that's the minimum size that you can have to put a fire hydrant on it. So all of the short line projects are a minimum of six inches. They may taper down to two if we're running down a cul-de-sac or something like that, where we just have a few connections off of it. That's the reasoning behind that. Thanks.
Thank you for answering those questions.
All right. Yeah, so this is just a map showing where all the selected projects are. Again, I think we have a pretty good dispersment throughout the county. And then I just, is there any other questions about it? Any? So next steps, we need you guys to approve tonight or disapprove the recommended projects. And then if they are approved, we will be notifying all the applicants of their status either way. If they are selected, their letter will have information regarding their cost share, and then the pay schedule, which they have 90 days to pay that cost share fee. And then, once the cost share fees have all been collected, we can move forward with selecting an engineer, and moving forward with the engineering design permitting construction, which we estimate that will take 12 to 24 months. We have a little asterisk there that that could be a little longer, depending on easement acquisition. And then I just want to thank everyone that's helped me make this program a success, especially, you know, working cross-departments. It's definitely a team effort to get this done, so I appreciate everybody who's assisted me with the program. And then, any last questions for me?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
So you presented that we had 34 total projects.
Yes.
Initially.
Yes.
17 of those are being recommended to be funded and completed. Of the ones that are not recommended, obviously, we're eliminating some due to that 14-day water age. If there's other projects, will those folks have a chance to reapply in upcoming years? How does that process move forward for those folks that are not selected for funding?
Well, so, in this case, really, everyone's being recommended. Everyone, there's enough funding that with, and with the water age issue, we're recommending everyone, even though the 23 at the bottom, we're recommending all of them. Now, in past years, basically, they would be encouraged to apply again for the program. I already, for example, I have a letter already written up. We don't know that, you know, if or when the next program will be, so I've, you know, referred them to environmental health to maybe get some input on how they could improve their well, and water quality in their well. But there's no priority list for like, if we were having a program this year, there's not like, you don't get extra points because you applied previously, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes, it does.
And then, just also, we'll mention, if they, if they have their well testing results, we are like accepting well testing results again, so they wouldn't have to get that done like a second time.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification.
Did I see in there, was it 3 million?
Yes, sir.
300,000 being spent?
Yes, sir.
On this? And we have 5 million is supposed to be applied to it?
Yes, sir.
Help me understand why we didn't?
Just with the amount of people that we qualified, applicants to qualified projects that we had this year, and then the ones that we had to eliminate due to the water age, that we didn't use up all the budget for this year.
So that's going to be applied to next year's? So next year, we'll have eight?
So let me, let me clarify. The board did not authorize any future short water programs beyond FY23. Remember, we had the discussion of the funding available for this, and so the amount of money that was available per the rate increases and the funding available did not allow us to continue this program past FY23. Now, of course, the board can revisit that, there's things that we can do in the future, but currently FY23 is where it stops unless we get direction to go further. Yes, certainly, 2 point, I'm not 2, 1.8 million, 1.7 million could be used for a future program if the board wished to, but right now, that would just be money that would be left over in the, in the budget. I do want to point out that we are individuals that do not qualify, there are other ways that they can actually have better water quality within their wells. They can approach the environmental health. In fact, we're going to have our environmental health folks contact these individuals and let them know of other methods that they can have their wells treated, that they can do to actually mitigate the water quality themselves. Obviously, it'd be nice to be able to help everyone. Unfortunately, we think that's just not, that's just not an option at this point. But there are ways that people can improve their water quality in their wells, and we'll try to notify them and give them options. And again, the county also has a program that we're doing through CDBG, I believe, or is it ARPA? CDBG, where if you qualify, we will actually assist you with your well rehabilitation. And again, we'll make that known to those individuals, and they can consider whether they want to apply and qualify for that.
All right. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good presentation. And thank you to the whole team that helped you, helped you. Yes.
We do need you to take an action to approve the projects.
You wish to do.
Yeah.
Madam Vice Chair, I'll offer that motion. I'll make the motion that we approve the list of recommended applicant projects for the FY2023 Short Line Water Extension Program.
Are there any comments or questions?
I'd like to add to that motion that we use that 1.8 million dollars for water quality, ensure that it just doesn't go back into the budget, but it's used for water quality.
Do you accept that friendly amendment?
I'll accept that.
Can I ask for some clarification? When you say that, do you mean that we would use that as part of the well rehab program, or as far as a future program for short line?
Both.
Both, okay. I just want to make sure I understand what the direction is.
I know very clearly what rehab and filtration's run, and a lot of our citizens don't have the finances to, do you say?
So the money sits in Union County Water, which is an enterprise fund. We, we can't do wells. That's, that's environmental health. So the, I don't know how you're going to deal with that, but I'll let Brian speak to that.
I wanted to understand what Commissioner Helms was actually saying, and then I was going to actually, and thank you. So what, what we'll do likely is, because we cannot use enterprise dollars to actually pay for individual wells, because the CDBG money is not enterprise dollars. That's, that's something we're, we're using outside of that. We can certainly bring back a possible FY22 program, I mean, 25 program, 24 program, sorry, 24 program with those funds, and look at that in that way. And then we can talk about what we can do with the addition to the well program, if there's any other funding sources for that. But I wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. We can certainly put that into water quality for a possible FY24 program.
One of the things that's changing this year is, gather, we got, we have on Thursday dedicate Norwood Plant, which will bring water in through the Norwood Lines that may give you a different base, that we can use that.
Certainly, yes, sir, absolutely.
So Commissioner Helms, I'll amend my motion then to, to approve the list of recommended applicant projects for the FY2023 Short Water Line Extension Program, and any excess budgeted amount would go towards a future FY24 Short Line Water Extension Program.
That's okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you again. That brings us to 23-529, Easement Condemnation Authority. I will turn it over to John Schutak.
All right. Commissioners, Mr. Manager, thank you for the time tonight. I will do my best to be brief. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the 24-inch transmission main that's going to serve our 762 pressure zone, specifically related to easement acquisition for that project. So I'm going to start off talking a little bit about the Yadkin program as a whole, then I'll talk specifically about this project, its schedule, where we stand in the easement acquisition process, and just wrap up with the requested action we have for you tonight. You'll see over on the left of the slide here, a schematic of what the project is. It's, the red line represents the 24-inch transmission main, generally coming out of the Yadkin Water Treatment Plant to the south, following the Lawyer's Road alignment onto Mills Harris Road on down to the south, eventually terminating at Highway 74 in between Wingate and Marshville. A couple other areas to note here are the Olive Branch Booster Pump Station, that's off on the left of the graphic there, and just keep Old Camden Road in the back of your mind, because I'm going to touch on that in a minute. So the Yadkin program, as you all know, started out as, as two projects, really. We've got the, the Raw Water Project, which is- really. We've got the, the raw water project, which is, consists of the intake and the pump station out on Lake Tillery, and then the raw water transmission main is included in that, and that's what transports the water from the lake into Union County. The other project is the Finnish Water Infrastructure Project, and this includes the, the new water treatment plant there off New Salem and Lawyer's Roads, and the, and the Finnish Water Transmission Main, which serves our 853 pressure zone. That's a 36-inch diameter transmission main, and it connects to the existing system at five different locations. Old Camden Road, and this is important, remember, I told you, remember that road, which is a 16-inch connection to the system, and then it connects at Morgan Mill, Sykes Mill, 601, and Ridge Road, and those are all 8-inch interconnects with the existing distribution system. Now, what wasn't included in the original Yadkin Program is the 24-inch line that's going to serve the 762 zone. And this wasn't included because of the cost and budget considerations that we were facing with the original Yadkin Program. So the 762 zone project, the 24-inch line was originally identified in the 2016 master plan update that was done by Black and Beach, and the need for that 24-inch line is because our water supply strategy is changing. So we're bringing the Yadkin Water Treatment Plant online, and that is taking the place of the purchase water agreement that we currently have with Anson County. So the Yadkin Plant is going to supply that 762 pressure zone in addition to portions of the 853 pressure zone that were previously supplied through that connection with Anson County. And that connection with Anson County, it doesn't go away, but it does become an emergency interconnect. It's not a daily source of supply. And the 24-inch size addresses the system capacity need. So it, it basically splits the difference between Wingate and Marshville, if you recall, looking back at the map here. So that 24-inch line is the ultimate solution for this. In the interim, until this line is built, because as you all know, the Yadkin Project is coming to completion, we're bringing the intake pump station, the raw water transmission main, water treatment plant, and that Finnish Water Transmission Main, those are all coming into service this fall. So the way that we're going to be serving our 762 pressure zone is down Old Camden Road, and it'll be backflowing through the Olive Branch Booster Pump Station. And that's possible because we have converted the booster pump station to a pressure reducing station. So it takes the water from that 853 service elevation and backs it down to the 762 service elevation. So we have a plan in place to serve it. However, this project needs to move forward in order to implement the ultimate solution. It's important to understand that this project is funded with ARPA dollars, and that is budget, state budget earmark that was allocated directly to Union County, and that does come with some requirements, and I'll get to those on the next slide here. You can see the basic information about the project over on the right-hand side of the slide here. It's about seven and a half miles. Again, it's 24-inch diameter pipeline. We estimate the project cost at 35 million, which is right in line with the earmark, and we're looking at a construction duration of 24 months. Looking at the project schedule, we're here in August 2023, so we're wrapping up the final design and permitting efforts, and looking to complete easement acquisition as we move into September. We'll, following that, we'll put the project out for public bid in October with the expectation that we'll have a, a contract in place and start construction by February of 2024. Estimating project completion or construction completion in August of 2026. And this is important to note because, well, there's two things to take away from this slide, and, and one of them is, first and foremost, we can complete the project within the, the constraints for the ARPA expenditures, which means we have to be complete by December of 2026. We're projecting completion in August of 2026, so we've got about four months of leeway in the project schedule right now. The second thing to note is that easement acquisition is the critical path on the schedule. So in order to get from where we are today to starting construction and completing construction within that timeframe, we have got to complete easement acquisition. There's no way around it. So we've got to go through that milestone. So that being said, easement acquisition, presently, we've acquired 45 of the 72 that are required. So this means we've, we've physically acquired the, the easements. We've recorded the documents. We've made payment to property owners. We do have three properties, or, excuse, yes, three properties, a single property owner that are still in progress, and we have 24 that have been referred to our legal counsel for negotiation and settlement. So tonight, what we're asking the board to do is authorize condemnation of the referred easement interests. So these are the 24 that have been referred to our, our legal counsel for settlement. And please understand that there may be a future request to address the remaining three. We are continuing to work with that property owner, but my crystal ball isn't that great, so I'm not sure how that'll come out. We always hope to reach a settlement. However, we may be back making a second request of you. So I will stop there and ask if you have any questions.
Is there a date projected that you've got to have the settlement complete to meet your target?
So referencing back to the scheduled slide here, we're, we're looking for easement acquisition to be complete prior to awarding that contract. So we can put the project out for bid, and easement acquisition can overlap with that advertising period, but before we can award the contract, we have to make sure that we have access to the property to do the work. We, we would never recommend that the board move forward with, with awarding a contract unless those easement interests were obtained either through negotiation and settlement or through the condemnation process.
And John, you know, just for clarification, for those in the meeting room and at home, we are talking about easements here. We're not talking about total condemnation of any kind of property, correct?
That is correct. These are all easement interests. There are no fee simple or total takes involved in this project.
Thanks, sir.
Are there any other questions?
Yep.
I, I did want to point out for the public's knowledge that if the board does choose to move forward with approving condemnation, it does not prevent the county to continue to negotiate and acquire those properties without going through formal condemnation for those properties. So there is still the opportunity to negotiate and remediate that, but this does give the authority, if we cannot come to a settlement, to move through the condemnation process.
Anything further I can answer for you?
No, I think we're, got all of our questions answered? Okay, so there is an action requested for this item?
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interest in property for a temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement for this 762 zone, 24-inch water transmission main, and high-service pump station project.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other comments before we vote?
Madam Vice Chair, I'll just say this, you know, condemnation is not something that I think any board member up here takes lightly. And I know our county manager had mentioned he touched on the process of condemnation. You know, we have a policy regarding condemnation, and this policy is, well, it's pretty detailed. We actually went over this a few months ago in one of our regular meetings, but there is all sorts of notices and attempts provided by the county to avoid, you know, going to that step. So I, I want to put the public at ease that this is not something that, you know, we, we take with, with a light heart. This is something that unfortunately is, is necessary at points. I will be in support of the motion, and I just want to assure the public that the county does, in fact, utilize many, many different methods to avoid this.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
The next item is 23-523, appointments to boards and committees. So we've got that all taken care of? Okay.
Madam Vice Chair, do you need a motion?
We need a motion.
Yeah. So, Madam Vice Chair, I'll make the motion to, let's see. Thank you very much. All right. So I'll make the motion to appoint. Thank you. I'll make the motion to appoint Dr. Heather Miller to the Workforce Development Board.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to your amendment. I'll turn the, turn it over to Commissioner Helms.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you, fellow commissioners, for, for allowing me to get this added onto our agenda for discussion tonight. I, I bring this, this, this topic up because over the last couple of years, we've seen organizations within our county host parades, festivals, or other events that include adult content to celebrate their respective causes within the, the borders of our county. While these organizations have rights, such as the freedom of speech, they're protected under the Constitution of the United States, and can also currently legally assemble under state and local law, our county also has a protected right to decline involvement, support, or even perceived support for these events. So furthermore, we've seen in the past that participation from our county personnel and departments in their official function, even under their best intentions, has been promoted by these organizations as official sponsorship of Union County without permission of the county. The misunderstanding of official county sponsorship has caused confusion and concern to our residents, and in order to prevent such misunderstandings in the future, official policy should be established. Personally, I cannot support dedicating county resources, either financial or otherwise, supplied ultimately by the taxpayers of our county, for events that I feel are inappropriate for children, despite what their advertisements suggest. So with that, I would like to make a motion tonight, and the motion is, is this, to help ensure Union County departments and employees participate in and support their official, in their official capacity, only events that align with the county's mission, core values, and policies. I move to prohibit official participation of Union County, including its employees, in their official capacity in any festival, parade, or other similar community event that in any manner includes, or is reasonably likely to include, based on past practices, future plans, or other information known to the county, unlawful activity under Article 26A, which is adult establishments of Chapter 14 of the North Carolina General Statutes, or male or female impersonators who provide entertainment that appeals to a prurient interest. And I would humbly ask my fellow commissioners to support.
Are there any comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner?
I, I cannot support your motion right now, primarily, I don't see that it's our responsibility to tell our employees how, what they can and can't do on their private time. I agree with your concept of, we don't need to be promoting some of the activities that, that are strictly adult-oriented, and I don't agree with it. But we're treading on, you know, next you're going to go to another segment of the policy and population and tell them, you can't do this with them. I think it's very dangerous for us to start doing this. I will not attend those. You know, it's, we may not lease the park to somebody, but anybody can go to our parks.
So Commissioner Helms, the motion was not about their personal time. It was in their official job, job position on official time as an employee, not their personal time. I just want to make that clarification.
As representing the county.
There's a parade coming up that, that there's concern about, and I'm sitting here looking at some of our Health Department officials, and it's, if they take care of the people, if they're there to promote the same, same healthcare and everything for entire citizens, you can't exclude that segment of the population, even though I, I really disagree with it.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
So I, I would say this, that there are many avenues to, to get things like education on certain topics without official participation. You know, I would look to other events that happen in our communities, bike rallies, I mean, it could be even Beekeeper Association meetings, and we don't have necessarily a public county presence there with our Health Department giving out EpiPens. So, so with that, you know, we are talking about their official capacity as representing an organization that is much greater than the individual. We are talking about our county, and we have seen in the past where, you know, even though we didn't have something like official sponsorship of an event, it was mistaken and misrepresented as such. And I think that we have a duty, as commissioners, to represent the values of, of our great county as best we can. And I think we have a duty to be also fiscally responsible with the funds that this, that may go along with this, with our participation in these events. And so therefore, I think that the motion is warranted. I believe that the language is correct, and I understand your position, but I will be supporting it.
Has it, has it been reviewed by our legal staff?
It has.
Would you like to make a comment on it?
I'd be glad to. The motion as drafted simply speaks to the way in which Union County chooses to speak as a government agency. It does not speak to whether or not individuals in the community choose to recognize their voice and how they recognize that voice. This is simply a position that Union County government would be taking in order to express its values and positions as a government entity speaker.
I will be supporting this motion tonight because, as we've already discussed, I think it's, you know, whatever you want to do on your personal time is perfectly okay, but it is not okay to use the Union County logo on social media or lead citizens to believe that this was an officially sanctioned and approved in participation from, from taxpayer money. So I will be supporting the motion. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you. You know, I, I would be, I would be inclined to suggest an amendment to Commissioner Brian Helms, and what I would suggest is that let us, let this resolution prohibit endorsement or support. I think a distinction that matters greatly, when you're talking about government, and county government is no exception, is we should make a distinction between the services that the county provides and how the county engages with constituencies and, and different communities. And we should make a distinction between that and endorsement. There are many, many, many services that the county provides that, where it would be inappropriate, and it, it's not our job to, to endorse or support. You know, one, one example that comes to mind is Narcan. You know, last week, I picked up some Narcan because... You know, last week I picked up some Narcan because I wanted to make sure that I would be well-equipped if I'm out there in the community and I come across somebody whose lips are blue, who may have an unhealthy pallor, and whose life needs to be saved. Now, that's not some endorsement or support for opioid abuse, but it's motivated out of a desire to serve and to hopefully save somebody's life. Well, similarly, there's so many things that the county does and ways that the county engages the public that have nothing to do with the county endorsing an organization or an activity or some public venue, but it's simply done in the course of the county executing its business and providing services to our citizens. So, you know, respectfully, I think that, you know, what I could support would be simply a prohibition that forbids the county from lending any kind of endorsement or support in statement or in manner, you know, to these types of gatherings. But let's not, you know, let's not curtail, or let's not prevent or prohibit the county from executing its job in serving its citizens, you know, because our charge, especially as local government, is to provide services regarding health, safety, and welfare. You know, that's a pretty big charge, you know, that's not the province of federal government, that's the province of state and local governments. So, you know, we need to be in the business of providing services regardless of who that constituency looks like or how they like to assemble, or who they like to hang out with, or what they like to do, how they entertain themselves. That should be irrelevant, you know, to the county and its discharge of its duties. I would also like to note that, you know, the Public Health Department, its authority isn't largely borrowed from, you know, the authority we have as a county. You know, much of the Public Health Department and Director's Authority is actually explicitly granted by statute. So let's not interfere with, you know, the exercise of those duties. And, you know, I'll mention, I know for a fact, one of the statutory obligations of the Public Health Department is to examine and research contagious diseases, all manner of contagious diseases. Well, sometimes you don't have a choice in terms of the kind of venue or the kind of event or the kind of activity that's presented to you in the public arena, but the county does have an obligation to serve its citizens. So let's not, you know, you know, let's, you know, let's not confuse that. That, to my mind, again, is a distinction with a difference. So in summary, Commissioner Helms, I would respectfully ask that you accept as a friendly amendment the following. That this prohibition forbids endorsement and support. It does not prohibit the legitimate exercise of county powers related to our obligation to promote the health, welfare, and safety of our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams, I appreciate your friendly amendment. But a couple of points of clarification. So first of all, your amendment does not solve the problem that we experienced with participation in the past. It doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem of misrepresentation. Furthermore, you know, you mentioned the services that the county is supposed to offer in regards to providing health, safety, and welfare to the constituents of the county. Our participation in festivals and events, I would argue, does not limit our Health Department from serving our residents in that capacity, all right? So our participation in festivals, parades, or events for these types of events specifically has no bearing on that. We still offer community services in Health Department official functions. Now, what I will say is this, I certainly appreciate your amendment, however, I will decline it.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor of Brian Helms's motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Okay, two-two. The motion fails. Okay, that brings us to the end of our meeting, I'll start with county managers' comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'd just like to say on behalf of the staff, the management team, and myself would express our condolences to the Rushing family. Commissioner Rushing, Chairman Rushing, very passionate about his service to Union County and to the residents of Union County. His service and his dedication will be missed, and we just want to express our sympathies on that. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you. And I'll begin with Commissioner Richard Helms?
No comment.
No comments? Commissioner Williams?
No comments, Madam Vice Chair.
Commissioner Brian Helms?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Okay, I would like to echo the managers' comments and just let the Rushing family know that our thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Rushing's wife and two children and their extended loved ones. This has been a tough couple of weeks for all of his family and friends, and quite honestly, it's tough to sit up here and not have his leadership on this board and his humor and his quick wit on these tough conversations. Commissioner Stony Rushing has been a true servant to our county. I had the honor of meeting him when I was on the school board back in 2014, and he was a liaison to Union County Public Schools Board of Education. And we agreed on a lot and we disagreed on a lot during those eight years while I was on the school board. But even when we disagreed, I knew that his heart, the only thing he cared about were the citizens of Union County, his wife and his children, and just serving to the best of his ability, and we truly miss him tonight. And, but we are honored that he chose to serve so many of his adult years here in this chambers. So I will just end with that, and I will accept a motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.